Ahmad, if you want to get started, that would be great.
Okay, all right, thank you. Good morning, Council. Thanks so much for your time this morning. It's our pleasure to present to you our six-year stormwater capital plan for your consideration review and also our 20-year strategies. That's going to be part of the bigger picture of the how we're going to manage stormwater. As you know, the Clean Water is one of our Division Public Works that oversees the stormwater requirements. And our goal is to make sure we have a systematic capital improvement plan, very similar to we have our transportation improvement plan, so that's systematic and also help us to get grants and also for our public to make sure they know what projects we have planned to improve, refurbish, or new ones. So that's next slide, please. So this morning, we're going to go, as I mentioned, our six-year program and how that's going to be outlined, and also talk to you a little bit about our 20-year stormwater capital process. So it's similar to like our transportation, we'll look at 20 years, what our plans are, what the goals are to make sure that we stay compliant. So today, I was going to talk about a little bit about permit and our policies and goals that we have within the county, and also make sure those are compliant with the state and Environmental Protection Agency. So on the six-year plan, we're going to talk about priorities, project types, funding, and leveraging how, similar to like our transportation improvement plan, that we use our local dollars to leverage a lot of dollars from the state or federal government to a lot of our projects. And then we'll also talk a little bit about the 20-year plan and how that works out and what our goals are. So I'm going to introduce a little bit, and then Jeff Schnabel, who's our interim Division Manager for Clean Water, is going to take it up and talk a little bit more in detail about the capital project. Next slide, please. On the next slide, I just wanted, I apologize if it is repeated, as you're aware, that we have two NPDS permits within the county, and those are called National Pollution Elimination, District Elimination System, that has been issued by EPA, and EPA has delegated that authority to the Department of Ecology, so we have that. And that permit comes with a lot of requirements, and it's a permit that we have to stick compliant. If we don't, then we could be cited, and a lot of other issues and grants and things like that could be, we'd not be able to receive that unless we comply with those. So it's pretty rigid, and as you know, clean water is really important before, must be treated before leaves our sites. So that includes the program Stormwater Inventory and some of our codes updates to make sure that there's new regulations, our new best management practices are coming out to make sure that's part of our codes watershed planning. And that's important to make sure that the areas are contained air and how that's impacting our quality of water. And the other thing is source control. We do have sometimes areas that the water gets polluted. We need to find out what are sources and then find out how we can manage those. I think we, a couple years ago, we did a study in Whipple Creek area, and why we identified some of the sources that was causing some problem with our quality of water. And then we provided information to other jurisdictions or other departments, like for example, Health Department. The other thing that's really important, that stormwater facility maintenance, because if they are not maintained properly, they will not clean the water properly, and will be, will not be compliant with NPDS permit. We do coordinate with other jurisdictions, other cities within the county, and also other counties and maybe even states. So we continue to monitor, and that's why our Clean Water staff, they monitor the quality and health of our creeks and waters that are leaving the sites. And the other thing that's important as part of NPDS permit, to do education outreach, so that schools in our neighborhood and our community knows the importance of the clean water and what they could do to make sure that our water and state waters are remain clean. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff. He's going to get into the details of our six-year and 20-year capital plan for stormwater. If you don't have any questions, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Great. Thank you, Ahmad. That's a, that's a good intro. And good morning, councilors and everyone else on the call. It's good to see you. Thanks for taking the time today to chat with us a little bit about these, these two efforts. So we're excited to get a chance to visit and get your feedback. Next slide, please. Can you, can you hear me okay? Am I yelling? All right. I always feel like I have to project to the machine. So I'll follow up a little bit here on some of the things that Ahmad shared with you. So obviously, our local framework and regulatory requirements drives kind of what we're doing. Primary goal, primary policy is, again, to meet those, those Phase One municipal stormwater permit requirements. As we do that, our goal, of course, is to protect the streams, lakes, wetlands of Clark County, minimizing stormwater impacts to those receiving waters. And then we have a lot of county land. We want to be maximizing the public benefits of those properties. Some of the more specific regulatory drivers among that larger permit umbrella, we have a structural stormwater controls requirement. That is specifically the thing that the six-year plan addresses, to have a capital program to prevent or reduce impacts to waters of the state. Stormwater management planning is a kind of a growing requirement that we have under the permit. We'll talk a little bit about some work we did in Whipple Creek, and we have upcoming work that will also be kind of wrapped into these plans as we complete it. And then, as Ahmad mentioned, maintenance and operations is, is a critical component of our programs already, and, and is kind of poised to become a more critical part of capital planning, again, in kind of that longer-term timeframe. We also have requirements under what's called the Underground Ejection Control Program. This is dry wells. They're basically the big manhole in the ground that stormwater goes into and gets injected into the groundwater. And so there are fairly strict requirements about how those items need to be managed, and we have some that we have to do some work on to alleviate known threats to groundwater from some of these older systems. And then finally, the Growth Management Act, this is primarily going to be impacting our 20-year planning, but we are, we do have a nexus there to include capital facilities for stormwater into the overall capital facilities plan in the Growth Management Act. So we'll be working with folks over in community development to sort of mesh these two efforts together. Next slide, please. So our priorities in 2021 to 26, this will look similar to what we brought to you last year. So we've got basically three or four areas that are kind of the bulk of our projects this go-round. And one of them, of course, is the required capital repairs. So we've got a number of those. We've got a couple of projects that will deal with some of those requirements for underground ejection control. I think we're going to knock out eight or nine wells during this six-year plan that are, that are in that problem category. We have a large number of projects for water quality treatment in Suds and Cougar Creeks. I'll talk a little bit down below about why that is. This includes the project that we spoke about yesterday at council that we're, that we're applying for a grant for. That's one of those in the Cougar Creek area. And then Whipple Creek is the product of one of those initial planning requirements that we had for watershed planning under our permit. So we have some projects that have kind of fallen out of that effort back a couple of years ago already, that are reflected in this planning process. We also have ongoing programs similar to the tip process. They have certain areas where monies are just sort of allocated, and we go forward and look for opportunities in these areas. We do catch basin retrofit treatments, where we're basically replacing old catch basins with new ones that have treatment capacity in them. We coordinate with that with the, with the hot mix asphalt overlay projects, so that we can sort of leverage on those and, and go in right before those, and kind of in a stepwise manner. We have a reforestation program, I think we've talked about before a little bit, where we're looking to replace reed canary grass in most places with regular old native vegetation and, and big trees that we'd much rather have along our streams. We do the drainage basis basin retrofit studies, and those are specific studies in smaller areas. That's the, that's the work that provides us these, these detailed plans for places like Suds Creek, Cougar Creek. That's where those, those projects fall out of, and we put a modest investment each year into finding more good projects. And then finally, street sweeping, which has an asterisk by it, because we don't actually fund the street sweeping out of this capital plan. We fund street sweeping out of our maintenance budget. However, because street sweeping is such an important part of keeping stormwater clean, the ecology permit does give us credit as part of our structural stormwater controls program for having street sweeping going on. So we do have a very robust sweeping program, and something we might even want to expand or consider expanding in the future. Next slide, please. So this will look very similar to what you see with the, with the tip presentation. We do try to model, as Ahmad was saying, the way we're doing the stormwater capital plans after the tip, which has been kind of a long-running program. So we're kind of making things a little more consistent to both help with understanding and help with conveying that information. So this, this chart just shows our overall six-year plan. You can see some of those or all of those categories that I, that I mentioned. We have 25 projects in this particular plan, and then the four ongoing programs, a total of about $13 million, which is about on par with, with previous plans. We, we're always kind of between a million, or excuse me, a million and a half or so a year on average. You can see, as you would probably expect, water quality projects are the lion's share of that, but we also have, you know, a fair amount of property acquisition money set aside to help with leveraging some of those things, hydrology projects. The capital repair projects are critical. They're not usually quite as expensive, so there's a number of them in this plan, but the total cost of them doesn't add up quite as much as some of the other things. And then you can see the other, the other pie pieces as a, as a smaller piece there. So, and, and by the way, if there, if there are questions as we go through, feel free to stop me, or we can, we can take a break halfway through and also get some questions. So, next slide, please. So here's a, this is just an overview of the, of a typical budget year for the Clean Water Program, Clean Water Division. This is the 2020 adopted budget. You can see our total budget, right around $8 million. And we are, as you know, an enterprise fund. This money comes from the Clean Water Fee, which is assessed to individual tax lots within the county, and that generates approximately seven and a half or eight million dollars a year. The proportion of that that goes to capital, about one and a half million in this, about 19%. You can see in the pie chart. And you can see how maintenance and operations really kind of, again, dominates that particular graphic. So over 35% of our, of our funding goes towards maintaining and operating the stormwater system, which is highly important, but also does take some resources. So that's kind of our overall budget. Next slide, please. So the way we go about trying to maximize our efficiency and stretch those dollars as much as we can, a lot of it comes down to leveraging. We do a lot of work on county lands, so legacy lands that the Parks Division runs, acquisitions that those folks make to, you know, protect lands. Those can qualify for us under our permit as, as capital programming, because one of the best ways to keep water clean is to, you know, kind of preserve some of those areas. So we get credit for some of those investments. So we do contribute, I think in this plan, we've got $300,000 a year set aside to help with high priority purchases that are approved purchases for the Legacy Lands Program, so we can leverage our dollars against theirs and kind of stretch their program as well. I mentioned the reforestation work that we do. Our six-year target is to reforest 30 acres of county-owned lands, so we're, we're well on the way to that target over the last couple of years and kind of moving forward there. And then there are places where we can do projects on county property that, that help, take a little, take a little pressure off of the general fund. So the, the big example right now, of course, is our Heritage Farm Wetland Restoration Project. That's part of the adopted master plan for that property. We're moving forward with that project. We do have some grant funding in hand for it. I think $500,000 to get started on that project, which is great. And then Clean Water will provide the rest of that money, and then that should, that should save us from having to touch the general fund for that particular part of the farm. County road projects, I mentioned, we install treatment inlets ahead, ahead of the overlay program each year. Some of our underground ejection control projects, we've been able to leverage with road projects. So the Northeast 99th Street project, that'll be built in '22. We're tying into that one and adding on to that one to, to address some of our more pressing UIC needs. And then, of course, just ongoing coordination with, with the county roads program, with the design section, with the project management section, to look for opportunities kind of in-between times, so that we're always kind of watching for opportunities to jump in and, and do projects together. So, next slide, please. Okay, I think this is the last I have on the, on the six-year approach. The other big thing I wanted to touch on is grants. So we do, we do rely heavily on grants for our capital programming, or have in the past. So from 2003 to 2019, which is essentially the entirety of the Clean Water Program history, about 22% of our stormwater capital projects have been funded by grant monies. So that's kind of cool. I'm happy to see that total. We're really wanting actually to increase that total. So we're actively pursuing grants all the time. For this particular six-year plan, we have been awarded funding already for four projects, for a total of about 1.2 million, and you've seen some of those coming through in council lately, and you will see a couple more next council meeting, I think. So about 1.2. And then we do have a number of additional proposals that are either in the works right now or will be submitted. I did get some bad news just yesterday morning after this slideshow was produced. That first one there, we had asked for, this is a new and different grant program that we took a shot at this year for another $500,000 for the Heritage Project. That one, the, the results actually got back before December, and unfortunately, we did not get into the funding packet of that, of that grant. So that particular 500 is not on the table, but, but we did get some good experience with a new grant program, and I think we'll take some, take some cues from that and hopefully be able to apply for some projects in the future. But we are going to be submitting a proposal actually next week, and this was the, oh, this is the one that, that you saw yesterday, actually, sorry. So we will be applying for about $500,000 for a project up in Cougar Creek and Highway 99. And then next year, we are already planning and beginning to write a couple of proposals for fairly large projects up in Hazel Dell Ave, and then one along Cougar Creek to do some stabilization where we're having some troubles with erosion.
Jeff?
Yep.
Are you saying, are you correcting what you said about the 500,000 grant for Heritage?
Actually, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chair Brian. I, the, the 500 listed on this slide is an additional 500 that we had applied for. So
Okay.
We did receive the $500,000 grant that we originally applied for, and we will be, we will be using that towards the project. So this was in another pot of money that we were hoping to tap, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, good question. Okay, I think, next slide. Okay, so that's all I had on the six-year plan. And in the rest of our time, I was hoping to kind of touch on our 20-year plan strategy, but I'll stop right here really quick in case anyone has questions about the six-year or anything you saw that you'd like more detail on.
Any questions with the council? Gary?
Thank you. I guess I lit up, and you could see that. Thanks, Jeff. I do have some questions focused on grant and what you're applying for and watershed issues. And I'll focus on Lackamas Lake, that entire watershed, because I think in the long term, and by long term, within six years, not the 20-year plan, we're really hoping I, to clean this lake up. And it's going to take another full study of the entire watershed, what's coming in, what's going out, what are, what are the problems with the lake, Round Lake, Lackamas Lake, Long Leaf Lake. Do we have normal studies coming out of ecology for lakes of this size? Do we need to get grants? Are we applying for grants right now? We're, we're going to need a full-on, long-range plan for this, if we're going to restore at all this series of lakes. So can you tell me what we're doing with that?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, Counselor. It's a little, it's a little bit of a one-off for the, for the six-year capital plan at this point, since we're, we're kind of just at the beginnings of those, of those discussions. But I would expect that as, as discussions go forward and as studies are done and plans are made for those watersheds, you know, obviously Lackamas watershed is, is part of the county, and that is one of the places that we go to implement our programs, right? So certainly, we could see funding opportunities. We could see project opportunities that will appear in either the 20-year or the six-year plans that directly apply to Lackamas. And the lake itself will be kind of a separate animal, right? Or the lakes themselves will be a separate group of animals. And those, those monies are typically, you know, you're probably going to be looking at grant funding or, or state funding to do things like lake restoration projects typically. But yeah, we, when we, when we worked on Lackamas Lake many years ago as the county, that was a grant-funded effort, and I would, I would certainly expect that, that the team of, of agencies working on the lake will be aggressively pursuing those kinds of monies. And then, of course, you know, the, the watershed itself is going to be hugely impactful for how the lakes respond, right? And so work that we can do through the stormwater program and other county programs to, you know, reduce nutrients and some of the other things that stormwater projects do for us, those will be instrumental. Absolutely. I don't know if that really answers your question, but.
Okay, yeah. So what I hear is we don't have anything specifically submitted pending on any of those issues yet. So I would certainly encourage a little bit more emphasis in that area. So another related issue, just in general, do we have a detailed, granular look at all of our roadside ditches that flow directly into our watershed and then have them prioritize? I mean, there are some roads that are just, some of these ditches are just right next to major streams and full of garbage. So do we have a map that has granularity to it and that we prioritize within the six-year plan to remedy?
That's another really good question, and, and we're going to talk a little bit about conveyance systems, both piped and, and ditches here in this 20-year part. But as far as immediate work, we do have a comprehensive map of all of the ditch work, ditch network in the county. That's one of our requirements under the permit, is to have those systems mapped, because they are part of our stormwater system by definition. And so we do know the extent of the ditch network. We are currently actually just launching a new project to kind of update and enhance those, those data sets. And at the same time, we will be prioritizing some of that area for work, the work that Ahmad was talking about at the beginning here, where we want to be really kind of strategic about prioritizing our investments in these areas, both pipes and ditches. And we'll touch on that in just a little bit here. But yes, absolutely, it's on the radar.
Yeah, and Counselor, also to add what Jeff mentioned, next year, we go, we're going to come and do another workshop with you in terms of our enhancing our stormwater system, because right now, we don't have a way to understand what our pipes look like. And only, we do have, we know what they are, but in terms of what the condition there, we don't know. And we want to do that so that we prevent any kind of collapse or failures, just like the two, the two that we had. One was a Pacific Highway, we had a washout, and then the other one on 72nd Avenue. So we'd like to come back and talk to you about that program and enhance that. And the second thing on the Lackamas Lake, we do have, we just submitted a final in our local Greenwood City Cameras. So I hope as soon as they get back to us, we'd like to bring that to council so that we can talk a little bit more comprehensive for that area and the opportunities for county, when how we can help on a technical level or other helps that we can do for City Cameras to kind of do some improvement on that lake. So that's, yeah, hopefully, as soon as we get that, we'll bring that to council.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move to the 20-year? Okay, Jeff, take it away.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thanks, Ahmad, for the, for the extra information there, and, and those are really good questions, and we'll, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about them in this, in this second section. So the 20-year plan strategy, I guess we can go next, next slide, please. Thanks. So a quick overview, we've, this has been a, a project that we just started here recently. So we're not bringing you a, a completed 20-year capital plan at this time. We intend to do that in 2021 with a more comprehensive look. But we wanted to start digging into the issues and start framing what we want to do strategy-wise, what kind of considerations we have for 20-year planning versus a six-year look. So appreciate Ahmad giving us the, the chance to do that. It's, it's something that, that we've kind of thought about trying to do in the past, but haven't been able to, you know, devote the resources to. So I'm happy to see us doing it. So we put together an initial team with a number of county staff. We've got seven staff members from Clean Water, Public Works Design, Public Works Operation, and then folks from Community Planning. And then I decided to invite a couple of our Clean Water Commissioners along for this particular effort, because they are, they're a valuable and sometimes underutilized, I think, resource as far as public input on some of our planning processes. And they have some, some very pertinent professional expertise. We have one, one fellow who's, who's done a lot of stormwater master planning as part of his career, and some others who've been just very active in, in environmental issues and, and discussions. So, so we've got the nine of us kind of taking this first shot this year. We developed several principles to kind of drive this. So if you take a look in the actual written six-year stormwater plan, we have a list of principles that sort of drive our six years. So we incorporated the principles from the six-year, because they're really kind of, you know, they mesh together. But we added a few additional, specifically calling out sound asset management as a, as a priority and a principle we need to be watching, identifying and leveraging collaborative opportunities with both internal and external entities. We really want to be looking towards achieving some measurable water quality improvements and protection over this next 20-year period, right? Some of the things that Counselor Medvedjev was talking about, where we can actually move the needle on these systems. And then another one is, is something I'll talk briefly about today, but it's also in the plan, is addressing deficiencies in our drainage systems, areas where we have simply no stormwater infrastructure at all, not, not old or crumbling infrastructure is just, isn't there. And so we've got some ongoing flooding issues in some areas that are susceptible, because there's just no system in place to deal with that. For our six-year versus 20-year, the relationship between the two, the 20-year, of course, a little more long-term, a little more proactive planning prioritization, is kind of what we're, we've been referring it to as the menu of potential programmatic choices and project choices that we can pursue. Six-year will feed off of that. It's the shorter-term needs, requirements that we have to meet, kind of the meal that we choose in any six-year period off of this 20-year menu to go ahead and implement. So that, that analogy kind of makes me hungry, but it also helps me to kind of think of how these things go together. Next slide, please. So I mentioned some strategies and considerations. So these are kind of the big-picture drivers that we, we kind of want to make sure that we're hitting when we talk about a 20-year effort. So first and foremost, it's been mentioned already here by, by several folks, strategic investment. We want to maximize the positive impact so we can have by investing in the most effective projects and programs. We'll never have enough funding. We'll never have enough resources to do everything. We've got to be strategic about making the biggest difference where we can, right? Sustainability, kind of a buzzword, but basically focusing on holistic watershed health, rather than sort of, you know, cherry-picking projects of opportunity all over the place, where there's not really a coordinated effort to, you know, impactfully go into an area and make a difference. So try to getting, try to, try to bring in that thought process. Adaptability, a 20-year plan is going to span four terms of the, of the stormwater, municipal stormwater permit. We get a new permit every five years with new and changing recommendations and requirements. We get a new permit every five years with new and changing recommendations and requirements. One of my biggest goals for this project is to make sure that we have a broad range of projects available, good projects, needed projects of a variety of types. So that when things do change in the regulatory community, that we can adapt to those needs without having to just do projects for the sake of doing projects to meet a permit requirement. We want our projects to be projects that we really want to do that also meet those requirements. So adaptability, key to that. Already mentioned leveraging partnerships. I think we already do a really good job of that. We want to continue to expand it. And then there's of course, sort of these larger elephant in the room type of questions that, that, you know, as we start looking out a little farther, just kind of be aware of things like population growth, climate, environmental justice is a big thing for the state right now. They've asked us to include objectives to assist overburdened communities as we do most of our stormwater work, which you wouldn't necessarily think there's a nexus of that kind of thing, but there, there really can be. And so we want to make sure that, that we're, you know, at least eyes open to those types of opportunities. Next slide, please. Project types. So we already went through the project types that we typically look at in our six year plan currently. Those will continue to be, you know, the primary or a, a major piece of what we do. So I won't read back through those, but we already looked at that. But there are some new program needs that, that we've already kind of identified and Ahmad touched on them a little bit. And so I want to talk a little bit about a couple of them. One being the repair of aging stormwater infrastructure, talking about the treatment and flow control facilities now. And then also about the conveyance system that Ahmad mentioned. So that's our, there's our pipes and our, and our ditches, right? And inspecting and repairing those on a systematic basis. I mentioned the drainage improvements and the flood reduction. Those are projects that do not currently have a place in any of our programming. They are not covered by the permit. They are not permit. They're not, they just don't have a permit nexus. So we're, we're not really able to use our funding for things like that right now. And then I mentioned enhanced sweeping. Sweeping is such an important piece that there's a, there's a possibility that, that the council and the, and the department may want to significantly expand that kind of work because we can save some money in other areas by investing in that sweeping technology. So, um, so we'll head on to the next slide and I'll, I'll talk about those two red items a little bit more. Okay. So I've got this as some opportunities and needs for this 20 year process. And I'll start, I flip them around here, starting with the conveyance system inspection and maintenance. So I didn't actually list Counselor Medvedje the ditch mileage, but it's extensive. We have a lot of ditches out there in the rural areas. What I did mention here, uh, cause it's been, it's been a front and center issue for us lately is the, the stormwater pipe system, the conveyance piping system. So we've got about 400 miles, probably more of existing stormwater pipe out there in the county, in the unincorporated areas dating back all the way to 1952 is the oldest stuff that we have on record. That's a pretty old pipe. And so what Ahmad alluded to earlier is we don't, we don't currently have any kind of an inspection program or the, the equipment necessary to do that. We're talking about things like, like a TV system to go down the, you know, like the, like the sewer companies have, right? Go down and take a look at those pipe systems and look at them and prioritize them. So that is one of those things that we, we will be coming back to the council, I think, within the next year and, and kind of hoping to have a conversation about, about those, those pieces of capital equipment and, and that developing program. We do see it as a need to, to begin investing in pipe inspection and then prioritize some proactive repairs. As Ahmad mentioned, just in the last 18 months, we've spent three quarters of a million dollars of unplanned repair to, to fix a couple of really big issues that have happened. And actually even more so, because if you include, uh, if you include the culvert failure there up on the old Pacific Highway, that was a whole separate one. So this 750 I'm listing is actually stormwater pipes in the last 18 months. And so when you look at our annual capital budget of 1.5 million, this is a, uh, that's a considerable fraction. Then again on top, right? And, and so I think long term, in both the 20 year and six year, I, I think we'll be well positioned if we can, you know, get a little ahead of that. And obviously we're not going to have to replace all 400 miles, but we need to know which miles are the ones that need replaced. And so we can, we can avoid some of this emergency stuff and, and the public health, public safety aspects of those failures. So really looking to have those conversations. And then.
Really add one more thing, Jeff, on that. And also to minimize risk to the county, because if the system fails and it creates flooding and damages residents in our commercial area, all roadways were caused accidents. So the risk for us will be a lot in millions of dollars. So if we can do a little bit of preventative and identify and prioritize our projects, so our goal is to minimize those risks for the county and also our community. So that's another, as I mentioned, we'll come back and give you a little bit more comprehensive workshop and how we're going to approach that systematically. Sorry, Jeff.
And I, I have a question, just to, to clarify too. I guess my first question is, as I understand it, there are some HOAs or neighborhoods or whatever that have their own stormwater system. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. We have about half of the stormwater infrastructure in Clark County is publicly owned by the county. And the other half is privately owned and maintained by HOAs or private commercial businesses and those types of folks, right?
So, so with that in mind, would these inspections include those? Or do we ask HOAs or other private entities to inspect? Just like we have septic inspections or tank inspections. Are these entities required to give a report to the county?
They are. Well, not so much a report, counselor, but again, under our stormwater permit, part of that permit is, is regulatory. And so in addition to our requirements to, to take care of the stuff that we own, we are also required to annually inspect all of those private systems. And we, and we provide the owners of those systems, whether it be an HOA or, or a commercial business, with a report card essentially of what's, what's working and what needs fixed. And then they are required under a timeline to fix those things. Yes.
Okay. So we do those inspections.
Absolutely. Now, the pipe system, the pipe system again is, is not something that we can inspect right now. So, um, but we could certainly, you know, uh, when we're talking about it right now, we've been talking primarily about the, the public systems, but there is that nexus for sure. Yep.
Madam Chair, a quick question.
Go ahead.
So Jeff, you talked about, um, you know, this pipe inspection, so, and a lot of these older systems in place. So I sit on the, um, the Clean Water Alliance Board and, and they have a replacement and repair budget. So they're anticipating that these aging systems are going to fail. And they don't always, can't always anticipate when or if, but they do have a very proactive preventative maintenance program. And so I'm wondering if we have something set up similar to that in terms of anticipating and planning for repair and replacement over time. And then, so we just talked about $700,000 with the unbudgeted repairs. And then speaking of pipe inspection, I don't know if there's a way, and likely they're really busy with their own equipment, but is there some way to work with the Clean Water Alliance in terms of partnering with them to help us look at some of our infrastructure?
Absolutely. Both, both really good questions. And, and, oh, I'm sorry, Ma, did you want to jump in there?
Yeah, sorry Jeff. Yeah, counselor, I think that's exactly our plan to kind of look at that and come and talk to you next year. And in order to prioritize and understand our condition or pipe, because right now we don't know. And we want to copy what the alliance is doing for this sanitary sewer system to this for the stormwater. And they, we have talked about that, I think, during the emergency on 72nd Avenue. They came and helped us to find out what's going on and suddenly they did the video. And then based on that, we made the call to make the emergency repairs. But I think working with them, they are stretched thin right now. And our system is probably as large as theirs for stormwater. So probably have to develop our own program slowly and then do that routine inspection, video monitoring and prioritize projects. But that is something that we're going to be working next year. And then hopefully put that as part of 2022 budget and how we're going to move forward.
Okay. And I would say working on that or sitting on that board for the last five years, they're a great example of a framework on how to manage that. So I'm glad to hear that you're working with them because they, they, nobody does it better. It's just a phenomenal organization.
Copy their process and how they do that. That rather than reinventing the wheel, we want to use their process and how we're going to manage our stormwater.
Yep. Madam Chair, if I may, direct a question to Jeff, we're kind of following up on an issue that you just raised. And, and it's one that Ahmad and I, we have talked about. And I want to just focus, because it's a good example, on where you have an HOA that has stormwater responsibilities and infrastructure. And it, they may be in and out of the incorporate, unincorporated area or within an annexed area of a city. Yet, so Lackamasque Lake allegation of failed bios filters. It runs directly into a water body that we have jurisdiction over. Yet not, no entity has caused the HOA to do anything about fixing, repairing their biofilter. So what, what are our levers for stormwater to ensure that, whether they're cities or HOA, but directly impacting water bodies that we have jurisdiction over? What, what can we do to ensure that that work gets done?
Oops, sorry. I was on mute. Well, Ahmad, you may have, you may have some thoughts on this as well. I, I think that, that's a, that's a great question, counselor, and probably, probably enough for another, another whole conversation or, or 10. But, uh, but in general, the, the, the best nexus that we have is of course in the unincorporated areas. And, and we do have, we do have some authority there for areas that fall under Clark County's NPDES municipal stormwater permit. So at the top of the ladder, ecology is kind of the, you know, the, the enforcer of that, of that permit. And so we do have the, the ability to, um, to compel compliance with, you know, taking care of private stormwater facilities within our jurisdiction. I, I don't know, and I really can't speak to how the whole thing at Lackamasque works and how, where those lines are. I know the, I know the area in question is within the city of Camas. So that's not something that's like, it's, it's not in, in the county radar to go and inspect those ones. Those are, so the city has their own stormwater permit from the state and it would be under that, that, that those, those inspections would, would take place. So we'll have to learn more about that as we go forward with the, with the conversations, I think. But as far as from the, you know, from our stormwater program, we, we do have sort of progressive enforcement ability on some of these, on some of these issues. And of course we like to work with people to the extent possible, right? And, and make sure that we're providing technical support. We do a ton of that with Clean Water staff right now, helping the private owners of these facilities figure out what's wrong with them and do the right things to, to get them in compliance. So I don't know if that really helps or answer your question.
And I'll just add, I think we mentioned the earlier that one thing we want to do, find out the source of the pollution. And for example, if the, the body of water from another jurisdiction or even private system discharges in our system, it's up to us to make sure that water coming to our system is clean, meeting the current requirements. So we have to do a follow up, just like Jeff said, to ask them for compliance. If not, then get help from Department of Ecology to kind of go the, the next step. But for another source of like pollution that we get is, you know, failed septic system. And we have to identify and then work with health department so they do the next step. But counselor, you're correct, that we do have to do a follow up. Even if it's water coming from another jurisdiction, that's not within our jurisdiction or compliance. But if they're impacting our system, for example, the water's coming to our creek system, that's within our jurisdiction. We need to make sure that they stay compliant.
Great, great conversation. Thank you.
Yep. Thank, thank you. So we'll, we'll kind of whip through the last couple of these here. I don't want to push you right into your 10 o'clock. We've got about 13 minutes, it looks like. So, um, so the other, the other piece of this that, that I'll quickly touch on, it's really very related to what we were just speaking about. We also have, you know, a, a lot of stormwater infrastructure that we, that we take care of. And, and a lot of that infrastructure is starting to get a little older. So this is a, you know, a scary looking number of, you know, within 20 years, we'll have 800 of these treatment and flow control facilities that will be at least 30 years old. So that doesn't mean that we're going to have to replace 800 facilities in the next 20 years. It just means that, that when we see, um, when we see our capital planning going forward, we're, we're anticipating that we're going to see an increase in the number of high cost repairs or replacements, right? So we've got a really good maintenance program right now. It's very robust. It's very proactive. It's required by the permit. So we get every ounce of mileage out of these things that, that we can, right? Before they have to have major repairs or, or replacements. So we're very confident about our ability to, to manage these things well. But at the end of the day, as we get hundreds of them getting up to a certain age, some of them are going to need more attention, right? And at this point, we only know how much that's going to be, but it'll be some. So that little graphic there is, it's a little backwards. But so if you start right here at, um, you know, by 2024, we'll have, you know, about a little over a hundred systems that will be older than 30 years. But then as you go out each additional five years, you'll notice that, that, that's the time period when the number of stormwater assets really started jumping up in the mid to late 90s, early 2000s. And so those are the systems that are going to start aging out a little bit more rapidly as we get going. So, um, you know, not a, not an imminent issue, but something that we definitely want to in a 20 year sense, we definitely want to be starting to look at those things. Okay. Let's, uh, let's hop to the next slide real quick. Thank you. Okay. So next steps, with the six year plan, you'll see us back at council on November 3rd for what we hope will be adoption of that six year plan, much like as we did last year. And then, uh, but in between now and then, if, if there is feedback that you all have or, or things that you would like to see, if you'd like to see the actual written document and look at projects and be a little more detailed, we can certainly provide that and incorporate your feedback. Again, on the 20 year plan, then that one, we're, we're planning to come back sometime in probably Q3 of 2021 to try to get an adopted 20 year plan. We're going to take any feedback from you all from this meeting and future meetings. We'll reconvene that planning team in 2021 and then try to kind of work on a little bit more detail of prioritizing and coming up with kind of a project matrix that, that sort of looks at trade offs that we might want to consider. And we'll bring those things to you, to you all for discussion. So, um, let's see, let's go to next slide. Okay. So that was actually the end of what I've got for the, for the presentation. I wasn't sure how much time we would have or whether you all would have interest in looking at a little bit more summary document or summary graphic of some of the needs and opportunities that we've identified so far. But if, if you do want to take an additional, you know, five minutes, I can kind of run down through this really quickly. I'll leave that at your discretion.
I think we could take another five minutes, just so we have five minutes between, between our meetings. Thank you.
That sounds good. All right. Well, just really quickly, we have, we have tried to start categorizing opportunities and needs, pretty much just known stuff, um, under the categories that I talked about. So you can see here that under the capital repairs, asset management kind of level stuff. We currently have 12 repairs that will, that need to be kind of dealt with. We already know these facilities are struggling. So we have those kind of within current revenues, we, we just anticipate doing those things. The thing I just mentioned about the, the large number of older facilities, that's something that we don't have funding identified for, but something we want to start thinking about as this 20 year planning goes forward. Same with the conveyance system. We basically talked about that. When we start talking about retrofit projects, we've got, you know, up to probably 50 potential projects that are, uh, that have been identified, but are not part of the capital plan at the moment. They haven't necessarily been prioritized either. So part of this process will be to look at those and say, well, all right, 50 projects is way too many. So, you know, what which five of those do we really want to hit and and what can we do the best good with? And so that's a lot of of this process going forward. We do have some opportunities to to leverage large scale projects with the tip with the county roads program. There's four or five right now that we're looking at out into the future where we we may be able to sort of leverage some stormwater benefit in addition to what's required for a road project and and get at some of that existing issue that's out there. Let's go to the next. Thank you. We have on the underground injection control, we have about 16 of those wells. We we own about 2,000, just for perspective, dry wells. There are about 16 or 18 of them out of those 2,000 that that require some repair yet. We started with 40 of them back in 2013 that needed some work. We're down to about 16 or 18. So we're working through them. We're doing that with current revenues. Mentioned before the drainage improvements. There are areas where we just want to try to go in and alleviate flooding. And those are the things, those are not really there's no funding really identified for those right now because they're not there's no permit nexus. And so we have trouble doing things that are not permit nexus with our clean water fee, right? So so there's some things, we have eight or nine of those. They're fairly high dollar projects, some areas like neighborhoods that are just sort of, you know, kind of under the gun all the time with water. Stream habitat, these are really good grant projects. We can match with current revenues and that's kind of how we approach big, big stream restoration work. Reforestation, we're doing that with our current revenues to target that six or so acres annually. Property acquisition, I mentioned that. There are opportunities identified through through Pat Lee's work with the with the Legacy Lands Program that stretch out a number of years and we'll kind of incorporate some of the high priority ones of those. And then finally, the street sweeping right down at the bottom. There are grant opportunities out there to fund capital equipment for street sweeping. So we may want to, you know, consider some some things like that in this 20 year program to maybe ramp up our street sweeping by investing in some some more sweepers or applying for grant funding to to buy those sweepers for us and and kind of reap the benefits of those of those additional sweeping trips every year. So that's just kind of a really in a nutshell, you know, some of the stuff that we have on the table to start considering as we go into the next year. So we're looking forward to that. And if there if there are items that that the council, you know, thinks of that they would like to see considered in addition, that would be awesome. We would love to have continuing discussion on it. So that's all I've got.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Are there questions or clarification needed of Jeff at this point? Or Ahmad? Either.
Madam Chair. I don't I don't know that I have clarifications per se. I just really want to say thank you for the really, really thorough work and and presentation that you you put in front of us this morning. I think this is only like the, how long have we been doing this six year plan? Is this just the second?
I think it might be the third, actually. This will be our second time actually formally adopting it with the council. But yeah.
Right. Yeah. So I just, I mean, I think I, you know, I think we're on the right track here and just really appreciate the work that you guys are doing to to get in front of this infrastructure and and our requirements for stormwater. So so thanks for that.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel. Really appreciate your time. And just kind of put the perspective, we have 2,600 lane miles of road in the county. So that's probably the same amount of stormwater linear miles that we have and just so that you know that the size of it. And this does not include our streams and creeks and stuff like that. Just so. Thank you so much for your support and we're looking forward to talk to you more on November 3rd.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks so much. Take care. Bye bye.
Bye bye.